Good evening and welcome everyone to Spokane City Council. I will start with the reading of our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people, and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so with one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors in all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices towards Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take action that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, please. Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Kathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarette.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. Tonight, we will have poetry at the podium, which was originally created in 2019 by Spokane poet laureate Mark Anderson along with Spokane Arts to give local poets and poetry enthusiasts the opportunity to make their voices heard at council meetings in a unique and artful way. This opportunity reminds our community that poetry can play an important part in the civic realm. Tonight, we have Lynn Short reading "River Run." Lynn, if you come forward. Welcome.
I am short. So, this was a much younger time in my life when I decided to become a river guide despite my incredible fear of water. And I don't know what people know, and I'm kind of required to say this. If you borrow lines from another piece of work, you need to acknowledge that in the beginning of your title. So, the title is "River Runner" after Sinead Lohan, no mermaid. Sitting at the riverbank of what I had reckoned would be deliverance from the agony of love lost, I watched my mirrored reflection instead tremble in trepidation at the face rippling before it. I'd come to the wilderness on a whim following a sliver of hope that time amidst the pine-filled valley would heal the wounds I could not yet touch. However, I did not calculate for the heave of phobia undulating up the back of my throat to capsize myself so utterly, so now I sit staring at the edge of the water knowing I've bitten off way more than I can ever swallow. I'm struggling to become wide open the brave explorer to the torrent before me because like a fool, it's my duty to run this river, to keep the raft afloat, to hold and find the swirling line that will not run us on the rocks. But questions such as, aren't we on a track? And don't we get out where we put in? Give me very little faith in the people rowing with me that I won't go on an unwelcome swim today or that they even know what a river is. It is savage and will betray you if you do not revere it, so I try to listen as the river speaks, beckoning me to journey along its wandering current in my self-effacing quest for power over or acceptance of my solid white fear of large wet bodies. I sit still, incapable of flowing with its foaming roar, unable to retreat to higher, drier ground. I am no mermaid. After all, I must keep my head above the waves. The river flumes and tells stories of the ocean it once was and plans on becoming again, and I thirst for that perpetual serenity, that sense of engulfment in truth. I'd rather be cast away here, the color of sunburned pleasure, treading water while getting high on my mortality, than continue to hold vigil for my own possible drowning. The river speaks of quiet transcendence, of growth to be known fluidly, a resurrection unfathomable, as they say. You can never step into the same one twice. And every day, I am here, and I feel the river more. I feel it move beneath me, guiding me through these rapids and me above, drive for another day, and me above, and the river below, and the river speaks. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Lynn. Next, we're going to have a proclamation in honor of Lunar New Year, and that will be read by Councilmember Kathcart.
Yeah, thank you. And Deena, if you want to come on down. Full disclosure, my beautiful wife gets to accept this proclamation tonight. City Spokane Proclamation. Whereas the Lunar New Year is celebrated by millions worldwide as a centuries-old festival symbolizing renewal, prosperity, and unity with uplifting traditions that bring families and friends together to share meals, honor ancestors, and welcome good fortune. And whereas 2025 marks the year of the wood snake, embodying wisdom, adaptability, and positive transformation, encouraging everyone to embrace personal growth and cultivate harmony in our communities. And whereas Spokane's vibrant Lunar New Year festivities, featuring ever-expanding local celebrations, engaging community performances, diverse cultural exhibits, and educational opportunities highlighted by broad media coverage showcase the enthusiastic efforts of residents who continue to develop cultural celebrations that enrich our city. Now therefore, I, Lisa Brown, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the people of Spokane, do hereby proclaim January 29, 2025 as Lunar New Year Day in Spokane and encourage all residents to explore and embrace these festive Lunar New Year celebrations, immerse themselves in the rich cultural traditions they showcase, and come together at local events that foster cultural appreciation and community connection.
Full disclosure, he did not help me write that at all.
Just for the record, I have never been kissed when I read a proclamation.
There's still time, Ben.
Thank you so, so much. This is our fourth annual Lunar New Year celebration for the city of Spokane. Four years ago, this was a thought bubble, just a minor thought of just like, how nice would it be that we get to celebrate Lunar New Year as a city? And that has now turned into a 20,000-person event for one day. 20,000 people at the Spokane Convention Center year after year so that we can celebrate Lunar New Year. We couldn't do it without the immense support of our volunteers, the crazy hours that we spend, that they spend stuffing 5,000 red envelopes, stuffing 500 swag bags, you know. It's a ton of work, and we couldn't do it without them. But the greatest thing is that Lunar New Year has, it's a flame, right? We've had celebrations at the River Park Square this weekend. We've had them at the library. We're going to have the citywide celebration on the first, starting at noon, and that'll run till 7 o'clock. And then the week after, we have the Spokane Chinese Association with their celebration. So, it is turning into a great flame that is spreading throughout this entire city. And nothing makes little Asian Vina, tiny little Asian Vina girl, you know, more incredibly happy than to see that spread. So, I'm incredibly thankful and incredibly privileged to be able to accept this proclamation here today, and I hope this is not the end of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, could I just make one comment? So, yeah, 12 to 7 on Saturday. Encourage everybody to come if you can. The lion dancing will happen around 6:30, maybe a little before. So, if that's of interest, that's kind of the highlight. Please get there around then. And then fireworks, big fireworks celebration afterwards at 7.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Kathcart, for more details. I went last year and had a hoot of a time, so with that, we'll go on.
Council President, can I do a point of personal privilege?
Yes.
Today is a very exciting day for us. We get to celebrate something that only comes up every five years. We have to congratulate our dear council president on her five years of service with the city. So, to do that, we have a few guests in the audience to join us here for that, too. We have former council members, presidents, three members, council presidents, Laurie, people, the council presidents' families.
This is my clan.
So, I have a couple words, and then I'll turn it over to these great former council presidents, too. So, as the first woman and first person of color elected to this position, Council President Wilkerson has been a consistent and fierce advocate for community. She's used her leadership role to listen. She pushes for all voices to come to the table and talk to each other. And she's made our city hall a more welcoming place to be, including adding Big Jim to the Chase Gallery. As part of the ARPA Work Group, she's made sure recovery dollars actually went to those in the community most impacted. She advocated for funding for childcare facilities, championed funding for cultural events throughout the city, and so much more. She continues to fight for funding for the police training center, training center here in Spokane, as well as for the East Central Neighborhoods planning and implementation efforts to listen to the community of those who live there. Council President is a leader in our region. She has served as a city, served representing the city at SRTC as chair, STA, the airport board, and at AWC, where she was the first black woman to serve as president there. And I get to be a council member with Council President on that board, and she goes around the entire state and truly the country representing us well there and advocating for us everywhere we go. Council President Wilkerson has been instrumental in changing the tone in our working relationships with neighborhoods, and this is a tough one, making better communication with community assembly. This is a change this year. Council President Wilkerson greets you with a smile and a warm embrace that most of you have probably experienced, and we are lucky to have her here on our team for these past five years. And with that, I'll turn it over to our other council presidents to add a little bit more, or family, whoever wants to go first.
Thanks, everybody. This is strange, being on this side of the dais, but having said that, I'm really glad I am. Council President Beggs said, Laurie, you can speak first. And that was what he said every time we went to a neighborhood council meeting. You can speak first. So, Council President Wilkerson, I am so impressed with you, continue to be impressed with you. You've served with dignity, with compassion, with grace. You serve all of us equally. You don't have special interest groups that you prefer. We're all equal in your eyes, and I appreciate that. And we have a five-year pin. I get to impale you with this. And I just want to say, Jacoby, thank you for including us, but neither Council President Beggs, now Judge Beggs, nor I got one of these, so... Just saying. So, I'm going to turn it over to Judge Beggs.
I am so excited to see you in this position after all these years. I remember the first time I met you at the Black Business Fair, and somebody told me, you know what? If you are going to win for council president, I have a good replacement for you. And they were so right, and you have been amazing. And one thing I want to tell to all the audience is, you know, one of the challenges when you're city council president is you represent the entire city. And so, some of your friends are like, well, you're not representing me very well because people don't understand that you represent the entire city at the same time. So, sometimes it feels like you don't represent anyone because somebody is a little frustrated with you for something. But you follow your truth and your lived experience, and you bring something to the city that it has never had. And as you might recall, my last night, we enshrined into the law that in Spokane, we all belong. And I am so proud. You epitomize that as much as anyone that I know. And I'm glad just seeing everybody here tonight and seeing the good neighborliness of everyone that at least on this night and in this room, we all belong.
Totally unexpected, but thank all of you and thank everyone who encouraged me and actually believed that I could serve this city. And I serve it with humbleness and respect on behalf of each and every one of you. Now, I have to acknowledge my crew here. If you go back in the newspaper when I was appointed, Thomas came right here on me. That just shows how much time has passed. And thank the three of you for being on this journey. In the beginning, they were excited. Now, it's like, Grandma, do we have to go? The answer is yes. So, thank you, guys. I appreciate it and love you. And to my family that's out there, I couldn't do it without them encouraging me and by my side, my son-in-law, my daughter's in Houston, my son-in-law, my son, and his brother, oh my God, and my niece. Pretty much all the black people in the room are related to me right now. Just want y'all... In some shape, form, or fashion, so, yeah, it's all good. But again, thank you, Spokane, for electing me as your city council president, and I will continue to the best of my ability to represent you in all the issues, the challenges, and also the opportunities that really, I think, on our horizon. I think Spokane is in a good place. We got some work to do, but the work is a lot easier if we do it all together. Thank you so much. Okay. I gotta reorient myself to the program. We're going to the consent agenda. Any testimony?
Do open forum randomization, maybe Council President?
Yes. Let's speak to that, Mr. Jacoby.
Our council rules allow for 20 spots in open forum, and we had quite a few folks sign up tonight, I think over 35, maybe 38-ish folks sign up. Our rules say that we give preference in this randomization to those who haven't spoken already this month. So, the names highlighted on the screen, this is the full list of people who signed up. The names highlighted have already spoken this month, and so you can anticipate that you won't be able to speak tonight in open forum, but you will be welcome back, of course, anytime, and this list will refresh at the beginning of the month next week. I'm going to pull down the number randomizer next to everybody's names and then make those, paste those as just a regular number. And then, once I can get this to work, I will sort those numbers smallest to largest. And if you are within the first 20 folks who haven't spoken this month, then you will be able to speak tonight.
This is technology at work.
All right. So, the first 20 folks tonight who will be able to speak are everybody on this list highlighted plus Greg Thomas. So, Silas, Chris, Rob, Jorge, Teresa Dennis, Wendy, Jennifer, Hada, Phil, Barbara, Edgar, Evie, Krista Santos, Christine Hadley, Robert, Tyler, and Greg will be able to speak tonight at open forum at the end of the ledge session.
Thank you. Now, with the consent agenda, are there any public testimony on the consent agenda? We have several on the consent agenda. First is Chris Schuler, Derek Azaro, and Raoul Pena. Want to come and speak to the consent agenda?
How many left are you active there on the floor? Hi, my name is Christine Schuler, Chris Schuler. That's my legal name. My birth name is Seven. On this consent agenda, this is the one where part of it is waiving the bid, the requirement for the bid insurance requirement. Is that on the consent agenda?
That's a resolution later on, Christine.
You called me first, and I wasn't all ready for that. Oh, it's the eviction thing. You're fast-tracking the eviction thing. It's on the consent agenda where you're fast-tracking eviction prevention where you have a whole bunch of extra money that you need to spend. And I think that, you know, when people are getting evicted, that means they did something wrong. And money should be going to people who don't do anything wrong. There's a lot of people in this city who don't break any laws, don't violate any laws that are needy for something, you know, homeless people who've never broken any laws. These people should be getting a preference over people who did do something wrong. Like, why are they getting evicted? They're, they must have done something wrong to be on a getting-evicted list. If they're not paying rent, but somebody else is totally going to pay rent without breaking any rules to get evicted, they're the ones that should be getting the fast-track for your extra money, not the people who break rules.
Thank you. Derek?
Derek Azaro, formerly of Logan District. This is on the approval of the current year budget. Is okay? Speak on that? Yep. This is how they're spending your money. Big Belly Solar, solar-powered trash cans, People Qualified Committee. I couldn't figure out who that was, five bucks. Yoga by Darcia, $75. List goes on. I went through 91 pages to get this, by the way. Deer Hollow Outpatient in Draper, Utah. It's a drug rehab center. Check number 006081514 for $18,128. Who is that for? Evergreen State, towing was $138. Now, they're saying that it costs $2,000 to tow a vehicle. Going on down. Canon Sports Massage, $110. Acceleration Physical Therapy, $295. Alpine Physical Therapy, $229.55. There's a Canon Sports Massage in here, too. Excuse me. Yeah, $110. List goes on and on. Pilgrim's Import, Unlimited Gift. It's a gift site for $1,185. There's all kinds of things on here like that. I know you can't go through the whole 91 different items on this budget, but I think staying a lot closer attention to this would be a good idea, especially when you're seeing massage on there and drug outpatient over in Utah for $18,000. If that is a pass-through by the insurance company, we're not sure. But if it isn't, these are all checks. Like I said, I went through 91 pages, just like this one here. One by one, by one, by one, by one, line item by line item, all the way through. I know you don't have time for that, but you're voting on this. You should be aware that pilfered in the middle of all this is all these obscure charges that we're paying for, and you're faced a $50 million budget. You won't give any money to the COPS program. You make them identify all their expenses. It should be the same thing for all of this. And any of the people on here, Catholic Charities on here for 20 grand, Jules Helping Hands for 65, you know. This is all money that you guys should have to detail before you come here and approve this. Like I said, you can't go line by line. You, like me, I spent two days doing this, just out of curiosity. Like me, I spent two days doing this, just out of curiosity. And what I found out was, I mean, is this for a week, a month, a quarter? What's it for? If it's only for a week, how many others can be on here? I have to check this every single week? Everybody has to check it every week? And go line, 91 different pages? And check every single item on here to make sure that you guys are approving our taxpayers' money that you're spending? This is property tax, and this town is outrageous. Seniors being made to sell their houses because they're getting a point they can't pay their bills.
Thank you, Derek. Your time is up. Raoul, and then Rick Bowcock.
Logan District, one. Yeah, 91 pages, $10 million worth of checks being put out, and I can't get a $3,000 crosswalk for kids' safety in my neighborhood. $18,000 for rehab, and I can't get a $3,000 crosswalk in my neighborhood. Cops are being pointed out nickel by nickel, penny by penny, how their expenditures are, but $18,000 for a rehab. We got somebody driving a city vehicle, has to go to detox in Utah, first class, or was that coach? Or did you send him by Greyhound bus? We, taxpayers, victims, citizens, are getting to pay these bills. And we thought it was quarterly, and this is weekly? What gives? All I want is a crosswalk for kids to walk across the street safely. But go ahead and spend our money outside, elsewhere's, and the heck with everybody else here, including me.
Thank you. Jim Ley, and then Dennis Flynn.
I'd like to speak about the insurance, the excess liability coverage, and I was just going to see if it would be possible that all claims paid per year be publicly posted on the city's website individually. This will give the public a better understanding of the risks taken on by the city. I would also like to have the departments that the claims were paid for on their behalf be listed so we can see where that is coming out of and try to figure out if there's a problem with certain departments where more claims are coming from. And also, I'd like to see if we could have something on the website that would show us year-to-year the premium cost of excessive coverage, to show it going up or down, and what that trend tends to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Dennis Flynn, and then Larry Andrews.
I live near St. Charles regarding CPR 2025-0018. First, I'd like to look at the principled position you're taking here. Your document notes there was, quote, "slow spend-down in unutilized administrative funds", end quote. This basically means there was money there to spend, but those you told to spend it didn't have enough demand or motivation to spend it. So, instead of not sending our tax dollars that were allocated but not spent back to commerce, which might actually show Olympia Legislature's a need to reduce the funding they allocate to commerce because of the demonstrated reduced need for this grant, no. Instead, your principle is to find a way to spend it all when it comes to our tax dollars. Next, let's consider stewardship. Regardless of whether or not it was a better use of our tax dollars to send it back or find a way to quickly spend it all, I'm not saying one way or the other. Looking at the table in the meeting minutes, I see that Transitions is able to provide assistance at less than one-third the cost of SNAP. Yet, you allocate more than three-and-a-half times more funding to SNAP than Transitions. I'm sure SNAP will provide you all sorts of reasons why this is an unfair comparison, but maybe, just maybe, you should use this to inform your future funding decisions to prioritize private organizations instead of government bureaucracies to get more bang for our taxpayer buck. Lastly, I'm hoping SNAP wasn't one of those organizations who were part of this slow spend-down problem, because if they were, it would seem questionable leadership tact to incentivize that poor management outcome with even more funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
My name's Larry Andrews, and I also own a business in Spokane, Andrews Mechanical. We're all in the same district. And I don't know if any of you read the paper this Sunday, but the front page talked about 325 drug deaths. And one death is not acceptable, but 325 is enormous. And this comes from us not spending our money properly, okay? And we talked about the difference of opinion here, but I bet you if you would have incarcerated some of those 325 people, they would have some of them alive today, okay? And we need to change what we're doing here in this city, because the money we're spending isn't providing results. And the results we need is we gotta get the drugs out of the town, we gotta get the people off the drugs, and then we'll have a viable city again. But we don't have a viable city right now, okay? And I hate to say that, because I've been here all my life, and I've seen it go downhill to such an extent that it just bothers me fiercely. I have a tired time sleeping at night. But here's what we need to do. We need to get the police number-one funds. We need to get the water and sewer district, the number-two funds. And then we get the fire district, number-three funds. And the reason why I put the water ahead of the fire is because if we don't have the water at the fire hydrants, we ain't gonna put the fire out with the firemen, okay? And then the building department. And then, if there's anything left, then we can start funding some of these other programs. But we're not doing a good job, and 325 deaths is a sign of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any council commentary? Councilor McAtcart?
Yeah, real quick, the comments Derek brought forward, I think, are spot-on, and it really highlights the importance that we do a better job of providing transparency to the community on these issues. I am strongly looking at some kind of ordinance to require a lot more transparency in this, and in fact, I'd love to see an interactive database essentially that's posted on our website that anybody could browse through and see all recent expenditures, click through to see exactly what they're tied to, what portion of the budget, et cetera. And so I think that that would be a really good tool for folks to have a better understanding of how those dollars are being spent. Jim's comment about the insurance, I think, is great. I don't know all the legal ins and outs of what we can post and not and when, but I think it makes a ton of sense that we would be transparent with all of that information. Nothing should be hidden or obfuscated, and frankly, if, you know, folks are coming down here and reading a list, and it's making us all think, what the heck is that? Well, that's probably should be screaming to the administration and others, hey, let's make sure that people understand, because there probably is for most of those things. It makes sense, right? It's connected to something that has, you know, it's a part of our budget in terms of what our employees are utilizing for services and things like that, something that's authorized, but it doesn't necessarily sound that way. And so, we gotta make sure that we're highlighting those things. And I do plan to bring that forward in the next few weeks.
Any other commentary? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Absentence, the consent agenda is approved. We're gonna do a little readjustment tonight. We're actually gonna go to our hearing. If we could have Ryan Shea come down and do his presentation along with Spencer Gardner.
Would you like me to read the item first?
Please.
H1, Hearing and Final Reading Ordinance C36629 relating to Building Opportunity for Housing Follow-Up Code Fixes Making Changes to the Unified Development Code that are intended to fix errors, clarify, and create more flexibility within the Spokane municipal code. Amending Spokane municipal code, Section 17A.020.060F, definitions. 17C.111.205 Development Standards Tables. 17C.111.210 Density. 17C.111.220 Building Coverage and Impervious Coverage. 17C.111.235 Setbacks. 17C.111.310 Open Space. 17C.111.315 Entrances. 17C.111.320 Windows. 17C.111.325 Building Articulation. 17C.111.335 Parking Facilities. 17C.111.420 Open Spaces. 17C.230.100 General Standards. 17C.230.110 Minimum Required Parking Spaces. 17C.230.120 Maximum Required Parking Spaces. 17C.230.130 Parking Exceptions. 17C.230.140 Development Standards. 17G.080.040 Short Subdivisions. 17G.080.065 Unit Lot Subdivisions Adopting a New Section 17C.230.020. Vehicle Parking Summary Table and Repealing 17C.111.450 Pitched Roves.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, council members, council president. So, my job tonight will be to summarize those changes for you. This is the same presentation that I gave during the Urban Experience meeting December 9th, about a month and a half ago, so this'll serve as a bit of a refresher as well. So, starting off, the primary point of these code changes is to basically tweak, amend residential zoning code. The lion's share of the code is, the lion's share of the code that's being amended is within design requirements within residential code, and the purpose is to fix errors, clarify requirements, create additional flexibility to support infill, and finally, to modify the parking code to be in line with changes made to the minimum off-street parking standards. That was amended by council. The complete summary is within your PDF packet on pages 310 to 311. This process has been fairly involved, and we started at the end of the summer. We held four different Plan Commission workshops, and the Plan Commission public hearing occurred on November 13th. The first touchpoint that we had with city council was December 9th, like I said, culminating in the public hearing tonight. So first, I just wanna go over a kind of a package of the minor changes. I don't plan on going over any of these explicitly unless any of the council members wish me to. The general, the gist of these changes is a kind of reorganization, clarifications, minor changes. All right, jumping right into some of the more substantive changes that are being proposed. For open space, this section of code is referring specifically to developments and how much open space is required within those developments per unit. We're adding flexibility in that allows a mixing of common and private open space. Currently, common and private open space kind of needs to be chosen either or, or one or the other, so it's kind of turning into an à la carte menu. Clarifying how units whose open space is provided via common open space are identified and associated with a space. And then clarifying how to count open space when multiple common open spaces are provided. Those last two bullets really are talking about providing enough detail on submittals when it goes to current planning, so it makes their job a little bit easier. Next, entrances. So, providing an exemption for units facing common open spaces, directly abutting streets to allow them to front the open space instead of the street, kind of mirroring the image to the right. This is, those types of developments are commonly known as cottage housing developments, so allowing that type of development to take place. We're also enabling scenarios where the door does not face the street, but a recognizable entryway does. So, that door may face like side yard, but as long as it's opening up onto some sort of stoop or recognizable entryway, then the code is okay with that. We're also introducing a set of distance and visibility design standard exemptions that apply to three different sections of the design code. That design code is within windows, building articulation, which is kind of concerned with larger, wider facades, and parking facilities, which is basically garage parking area requirements. The exemption is, basically states if a facade is setback at least 60 feet or more, or is not visible, then we are not applying these design standards to it, so just injecting a little bit more flexibility into residential developments. Another thing that is being proposed is the windows requirements. So, we're, it's a bit of a small, it's a small change to the text, but a rather large change to the outcome. So, we're providing an exemption for attached garage facades and attics as part of what needs to be calculated for determining the 15% window requirement. So, before, in the image, the entire facade on that example would need to be calculated to determine the 15% windows that would be required. In this example, that would be approximately 80 square feet of glazing. This proposal was about 40 square feet short, not a very significant amount to put on a facade like this, because the only living space is basically right adjacent to the attached garage. Under the new code, it would basically be the living space is all that's being calculated to determine that 15%. In this example, it's just that blue box, so a pretty significant difference. This'll help primarily examples like single-story attached homes, or homes with attached garages and attics that do not have living space. Next up, building articulation. So, we're clarifying how facades of attached housing equals a single building for the purposes of this section. That is to say, if someone comes in with kind of a row of maybe skinnier lots, and they put a bunch of attached housing in a row, the building articulation standards would still apply to that even if they're on different lots. We're providing more flexibility for building modulation and, quote-unquote, additional features requirements. And then finally, inserting an example table to help clarify this section of code. Understanding this section of code is a little tricky, so examples always help. Parking facilities, this is the section where we've perhaps had the most robust amount of changes. So, first off, we're providing more flexibility through the following. Allowing single-car garage to be even with the house. Instead of step-back, the current requirements require all garages, attached garages, be stepped-back two feet. With this, a single-car garage would be provided a little bit more leniency. Allowing a covered porch to count towards the step-back requirements for a garage, that is to say that perhaps the garage is in front of the living space, but so long as a covered porch, I guess the front of the covered porch, so the front posts of the covered porch are in front of the garage, then the standards would be met, so providing a little more flexibility in kind of home layout. Also exempting garages that are turned to face a side lot line, as long as the facade meets the other design standards. We're also clarifying that detached garages should not be located between the primary structure and the street. We're also putting in some language, like relief valve language within this section. We do have existing lots where the house is all the way at the back of the lot. Not common, but we do have those scenarios, so in those scenarios, there is a relief valve for if someone absolutely wants, needs a garage in front of their house. Providing limited exceptions for the 36-foot driveway separation requirement. Right now in code, we require kind of a firm, every driveway shall be 36 feet separated from one another, so we're providing some language in code that provides some limited exceptions if someone absolutely needs those to be closer. And then finally, within parking facilities, we're adding in an exception to the 50% garage rule, so the Plan Commission went through an exercise where they were looking at images of homes, and council member Klitsky was part of this. at images of homes in, council member Klitsky was part of this, in the city that were not necessarily allowed under current code. This example is from those two houses that you see there. It's actually a row of four in Peaceful Valley. These are not allowed under current code. Plan commission said, "We would like those to be allowed." How, how can we do that? So we're, we're adding in an exception to the fifty percent garage rule, which is the bit of code that stops structures like this from being built, allowing for multi-story, narrow units with one-car garages on the first floor. And the key there is requiring living space being above that garage, so you don't have kind of rows and rows of just garages. Pitched roofs. So this is a simple repeal of an entire section. It's, it's really just kind of a one-page section. This code only applies to multi-unit housing within higher-density zones, specifically the RMF and RHD zones, and was treating multi-unit housing differently than middle housing projects that can be built to similar densities in lower-intensity zones. So the purpose of this is just trying to create parity with design standards for multi-unit and middle housing. Last but not least, parking code changes, so bringing the kind of collection of parking, off-street parking sections into conformance with the amendments that were recently passed, removing the mandated minimum off-street parking requirements. The most substantive change here is getting rid of all the tables and then creating a new summary table section, which is the seventeen C two three oh, oh two oh. And with that, that is all I have. Are there any questions, comments?
Are there any public testimony during this hearing? And I do have one, Dennis Flynn.
Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. Regarding this hearing, one, ordinance C three six two nine, again, reiterate for anyone with ears to hear my previous observations that basically we're allowing, as far as I understand it, a minimum of six units on basically every residential lot citywide, and we've eliminated any off-street parking requirements. I understand this isn't going to change a neighborhood overnight, but it will over time. So I anticipate over time that this will have growing negative impacts on quality of life for neighborhood character, as well as impacting city services such as snow plowing, street cleaning, garbage pickup, and our taxpayer-subsidized recycling pickup. And yet again, I implore you to add rescinding the Growth Management Act to our city advocacy team's agenda focus with our legislature in Olympia. Instead of allowing Olympia more and more, instead of asking Olympia for more and more and continuing to see less and less, if not worse, that we get for it, why don't we instead advocate to get Olympia's boot off our neck? Thank you.
That concludes public testimony on the hearing. Any council commentary?
Council president, I'd ask for a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you. Motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
If the move is second to close the hearing, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any notes? The hearing is closed. Now I'll ask for a council commentary. Before we go to the vote. So council commentary, prepare to vote. Okay, clear the board. Prepare to vote. That passes. Thank you.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash four, declaring the waiver of public bid requirements for the purchase of twenty twenty-five insurance premiums for specified city insurance coverages.
Public testimony?
Christine Schuler.
We have one public testimony, that's Chris Schuler. Thank you, guys. I'm sure security is handling what's outside in the foyer.
The clock's already going. My legal name, Christine Schuler, I'm in District Bingle in Cathcart, Spokane. My birth name is Seven. So like, there's a disconnect to logic in this. You're waiving the requirement for the bid thing where generally what it is, is people are supposed to take the lowest bid, or governments, city governments, they're supposed to take the lowest bid of, that meets the needs of what they're seeking, right?
Sorry, council president, can we close the door?
Can we close the door, please?
Yeah, I'm running out of time here.
We'll, we'll pause it, Christine, for a second.
Yeah.
Well, he's taking my time.
We, we paused it.
We'll come back to you.
Rick.
Rick, Rick, we need to conduct our business. Rick, Boeck, could you close the door?
Please close the door, Rick.
Rick, Mr. Boeck, would you please honor us by closing the door?
We have no idea what is going on out there.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Christine, please continue.
I lost a whole lot of time on that. We, yes. Okay, so I feel that there's a disconnect in logic because the reason of taking the lowest bid is to save money. You know, as long as it meets the need of what you're asking for, what you're, what you're wanting a bid for, right? That's how it's supposed to be. That's why you take the lowest bid, so you don't play this, you know, corrupt mafia games where you have your buddies earn a lot of money taking the highest bid. And so that's why they do that, taking the lowest bid. So there's a disconnect. You say that you're going to waive that so you can save money. That doesn't make sense logically because that's what the whole system is, you know, to, to, to pay the least amount. So it doesn't, there's, there's a giant disconnect in logic. Why are you waiving the system that forces you to take the lowest bid to, as a claim to save money? It shouldn't be needed if, what the system is working. So I think that there's a lot of something, you know, trickery going on where maybe the city is getting a lot of claims for lawsuits and you're having to pay out a lot, and that you're never going to get the lowest bid because you, the city has been violating people's rights, their constitutional rights, and a lot of that. And so it, it doesn't make sense, and you didn't explain in the paperwork why that is needed to save money when the system of taking the lowest bid is the system to save money. It doesn't make sense. I call trickery. I think it's political trickery, and you're not being straight and honest with the citizens on why you're doing this.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
First reading ordinances, ordinance C thirty-six six thirty-four relating to creating an alcohol impact area within specific boundaries of the city of Spokane, adopting a new chapter ten point eighty-two of the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance C thirty-six six thirty-five implementing a community health impact area and public health measures to mitigate the impacts of addiction, adopting a new division seven and chapter ten point eighty-one of the Spokane Municipal Code. And ordinance C thirty-six six thirty-two providing for the acquisition by eminent domain of certain lands necessary for water booster pump station in the vicinity of North Weber Drive and West Shawnee Lane located in the city and county of Spokane, state of Washington. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
Thank you. We have several public comments on first readings. The first is Sherri Barnett, and then Philip Andrew Hawkins, I can't, the last part was cut off.
I think he's left.
He's left, okay. Well, Sherri Barnett, and then Larry Anderson.
Yes, I'm Sherri Barnett, and I live in Spokane. I have observed the deterioration of Spokane, and it is heavily due to a lack of enforcing the laws as far as the police are concerned, and making them the, more or less the prosecuted sometimes. You have many people that are on drugs and alcohol, and I do not think that you should be stopping, putting them in the jail till they dry out, because we're paying medical, we're paying psychological, we're paying for this Narcan over and over and over, and I, as I understand, they're going to be asking the businesses to pay and supply Narcan. No, what we have to do is we have to be rid of drugs. We have to come down hard on the drug dealers, and we have to allow the people that are on drugs to get a glimpse of what their life will be like when it's under control, when they're living a decent life, when they're being committed to this community, like the community is committed to them. And I know it's a really hard task, but we really got to do it because this thing rolls fast, and it's very expensive. When you have to take somebody to the hospital and you have to supply and medical care for a long period of time, over and over repeatedly, repeatedly, you're racking up a big bill. So it is my hope that we'll try God a little bit more in prayer and really work hard to get rid of drugs. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Larry, and then Dennis Flynn.
I'm Larry Andrews, Councilman Wilkerson, head council, and I have a business here too, so, yeah, I'm talking about the alcohol problem, goes with the drug problem and everything else. I mean, I park over in the parking lot over here where I have to pay, okay? And by the time I get here, I went through one marijuana group of kids, and then I walk another street to get here, and I walked through the kids that had the beer in their hands that couldn't been more than thirteen, fourteen years old, passing that around. And then I finally walk into the city area here a little further. Now, we got laws against this, so, so why, why aren't we having the police out there enforcing the laws? Okay? You're going to save some of these kids because they don't know what they're doing, and, and, and when people don't know what they're doing, we got to straighten them out, otherwise the problem even gets bigger. Okay? And I mean, we had a kid in our district got shot the other day, right through the door. I mean, what do, what do we got to do here? I mean, you need to spend the money on the police department, incarcerate these people somehow, get them off drugs, and then move them on to something that they can do. Okay? We can't keep patting them on the back. It's got to happen. I mean, my brother went down to Texas, they don't have that problem down there. They have laws, and people obey the laws, and they have people that actually enforce the laws. Here, we give them pats on the back and give them more money and say it'll be all right, but that don't work. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Dennis, and then Sunshine.
Hi, Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles regarding C three six six three four and three five for an alcohol impact area enforcing the sale of Narcan. Instead of free-market principles today, my focus on the capital T truth these ordinances identify, specifically the false application so common these days of the concepts of equity and bias. We're socially conditioned to associate the word equity with good. Likewise, we associate bias with bad. Council president, if we both equally put time, talent, and treasure toward a joint endeavor, we rightfully should expect equitable distribution. After all, that's fair, that's good. But if I can, for whatever reason, only put in half as much effort as you, or from your perspective, you put in twice as much as me, should we expect an equitable fifty-fifty split? Or should you expect to receive twice what I get? And using official, a fictional example for bias, let's consider your neighbor to the west is physically capable but elderly person, and your neighbor to the east is physically capable young person. In a snowstorm beside your own, whose walkwear you're more like, more likely to shovel? How does this apply to these ordinances? Surely it's obvious, right? You are inequitably applying an alcohol impact area to one area of the city, and I'm sure you're doing it for the positively biased reason to protect the public safety, health, and welfare, and not for the negatively biased reason that these neighborhoods are racially more diverse than most other neighborhoods. Still, you might ask, why does this matter? Why are you bringing this up? I bring this up so that when we ask you to fund policing against person and property over things like traffic calming, ideological crosswalks, subsidized recycling, purposely raising city wages based on some national average when we're in the middle of a budget crisis, it's not because we want inequity or implicit bias, but rather because we all want the rule of law. And I hope you will keep that in mind when some pigeonholed activist group who has a biased purpose that demands inequitable treatment to favor their cause makes a false appeal to equity and bias meant to browbeat you into submission.
Thank you, Dennis. Is Sunshine, is she out there, Will? After Sunshine, then we will have Wendy Fishburne.
Is this the alcohol thing? Okay, thank you. Sunshine Wiggins, Spokane. I think what you guys are planning to do is like they can't have certain things downtown and whatnot, if I'm understanding right. And I've seen that happen down here before in the past, and so what they do is they just go across the river to get it, which is okay, I mean, if they want it, they're going to get it. But I agree with taking it out of downtown. I completely support this. I have seen it happen two other times, and it was very successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine. Next is Wendy, and after Wendy, Rick Boeck.
Good evening, all. I'm Wendy Fishburne, marriage and family therapist, vice president of the Spokane Business Association, and regular at the Homeless Coalition. It's been great to see each of you at different locations this week. Thanks for being present in the community, I appreciate it. I applaud the attention the city is giving this community impact ordinance trying to address the addiction problem in the downtown core. Thank you for the pivot. I don't like making businesses pay additional fees, but I understand the logic that if you sell paraphernalia, you should also supply mitigation. I can see the logic. Please continue this pivot from a housing to an addiction treatment mindset. Our compassion needs to be data-driven, so I'm looking at the data from the medical examiner's report through 2023. The numbers in 2024 are similar, only higher. From 2022 to 2023, there was an increase in thirty-two percent of fentanyl-related overdose deaths, continuing a trend which has resulted in an astonishing six hundred percent increase from 2020 to 2023. Three years, six hundred percent increase, and that's 2023, and as the gentleman pointed out, so that's three hundred and one deaths. 2024, it's three hundred and twenty-five deaths. So now let's look at deaths by exposure. I was wrong about this in the fall. Contrary to expectation, this is their report, the only one person out of eleven environmental exposure deaths was a member of the unhoused community living outdoors in the winter. We need to focus our efforts on what will make the greatest impact. If we're talking about housing and homelessness, we are exponentially missing the crisis by literally three hundred to one. Our funding efforts should be similarly allocated, three hundred to one, so drive your efforts and influence towards addiction treatment and prevention, and your impact will be great. Stop funding efforts that make it easy to die by addiction. This is harmful. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Rick? And after Rick will be Will Huelings.
Sorry about the civil disobedience, but there's a mental health crisis out there. This is about the fentanyl and the alcohol. Okay, well, the alcohol thing, I remember in 2010, they did a similar thing, you know, and then two years later, they, the Washington State, you know, made the actual liquor legal, so all the grocery stores were selling liquor, so that just failed. I get where you're coming from, you know, alcohol is... I get where you're coming from, you know, alcohol is god of wine, you know? He just takes away our filters. I get it. Just wondering, you know, I mean, you're going to put this thing on the alcohol, is it just the downtown area? I don't know. But people are still going to be buying whiskey, you know that. I don't know how you're going to stop that. They're going to carry flash, they're going to get drunk. I mean, I just want to point it out. The fentanyl thing, I just get so upset that they focus so much on the fentanyl thing, but they refuse to talk about the sex offenders. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Will, and then Chris Shuler.
Good evening. My name is Will Huelings, and I live downtown Spokane. Spokane City Council, are you even paying attention? I cannot support ordinance C-36634 and 35 because they represent misguided and ineffective attempts by council members Zepone, Wilkerson, and Dillon to address critical issues. Instead of tackling the root causes of addiction, enforcing existing laws, and holding individuals accountable, these ordinances focus on bureaucratic Band-Aids that do nothing to improve public safety or health. Creating an alcohol impact area or community health impact area is nothing more than political theater. These measures add unnecessary regulations while ignoring the real crisis tearing Spokane apart. Rampant drug use, escalating crime, homelessness, and the collapse of downtown. Spokane deserves real solutions. I don't think people, if you go on Spokane News, you don't hear people overdosing on alcohol, do you? It's fentanyl. It's fentanyl. It is. It's embarrassing. All these overdoses. The other day, there was like three people that overdosed, and one of them died. Do you guys feel good about that? It's sickening. I live downtown at the Rid Path, and I watch people dying on the sidewalk. It's sad, and it's disgusting. But you guys do nothing, nothing, zero. You just sit around. Like I said, move that crap over to Lisa Brown's little neighborhood of Kendall Yards. See how she appreciates having drug addicts out in front of her house smoking fentanyl or smoking meth? Or how about homeless people all up and down her sidewalk? How about feces and shit and piss all over the fucking sidewalk? How about that?
Thank you, Will. Chris? Christine is somewhere. Christine? Yes.
I've never liked the name Christine. It's not my real name, and I was ordered to use it, and I prefer Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
My legal name, Christine Shuler, call me Chris, but my birth name is Seven. I'm in Cathcart and Bingles area. This is for two subjects, right? One is the eminent domain, right? Eminent domain. That's how I became homeless. Out there where Camp Hope was, used to be a whole lot of houses that I lived in. I was not on social security when I could have been. And you came through in the eminent domain, the whole place where there was nowhere for me to move to. I had to live in my car for two years before downtown, the apartment building I live in was built. Okay? So I expect that before you pass this resolution, ask yourself, has the people, like, you didn't say, I read the whole thing, is it a business? Is it a house? Every city council member who is of that district should actually go and meet the people they're eminent domaining and talk to them. If you haven't done that, you got no business voting for it. Okay? Nobody came and visited me. I had no idea about all this stuff. And you just left me homeless, living in my car for two years, and treat me bad. The other one, alcohol impact area. Downtown Spokane has been the alcohol area in this city for 150 years. When people want a bar hop, they go downtown. That's where all the bars are. Okay? And so what you're doing is trickery. When you say the businesses actually sell more money retail when you block somebody from buying a single drink, why? Because they're buying a six-pack. You know, if somebody wants to buy one alcoholic drink and they go into 7-Eleven, I'm not a drinker, by the way. I've never been a drinker, ever. I've never been an alcoholic. So, but I don't need to be to defend people who need to buy one drink. But now they can't. Now they have to buy a six-pack. That's not solving anything. It's actually encouraging them to drink more. You know, why don't you just ban alcohol in the whole downtown area? Why not? Oh, because of all the bars and businesses and restaurants who sell alcohol. So what I see happening here is trickery.
Thank you. That concludes our legislative agenda. We will now transition to open forum. When addressing the council, members of the public shall address all remarks to the council president. Also ensure that the evidence and expression of opinion are included in the record and to ensure that decorum, a deliberative process is maintained. No modes of expression, including but not limited to demonstrations, banners, signs, applauses, profanity, vulgar language, or personal insults are permitted. At this point, open forum is two minutes, and we're going to start with Silas. We will come back in a minute. Next, we have Rob. Oh, Silas. You have two minutes.
Did we have open forum right now? Is that what?
We are in open forum right now. You have two minutes.
Okay. Sorry about that. Lots of chaos out there. Just wanted to grab my notebook. So, okay. My name's Silas. I'm here to encourage all of you on your, like, path towards living up to our new city motto, which is we all belong here. It's evident that awareness needs to be raised around the Keep Washington Working Act and its current protections for immigrant and refugee communities. I look forward to the upcoming resolution that's been initiated by Latinos in Spokane and hopefully seeing you all commit to taking action that will help the city support the law, which is the Keep Washington Working Act. Right now, across the country, cities and states are mobilizing to not only assist with some extreme executive orders, but also take even more extreme actions beyond what the order calls for. Missouri and Mississippi lawmakers have proposed bills that are calling for not only $1,000 bounties on undocumented immigrants, but also proposing life sentences for those they apprehend, including, like, no release unless the federal government intervenes. And if the federal government intervenes to deport people, it has to be within a 24-hour limit. Otherwise, they're imprisoned for life in Mississippi or Missouri. It hasn't passed yet, but what I'm trying to say with this is y'all need to be proactive in taking steps to, and the crazy thing is, our state is already making steps towards protecting people that don't deserve this, right? You can take proactive action under the protection of the state to make sure that we don't see these kinds of like draconian punishments taking place here in Spokane. But you need to do what you can now. And I know that a lot of you are in this position because you want to do right and you want to serve people, right? And it's like the whole it's not going to happen here thing, and even relying on our state to have our back.
Silas, your time is up.
Sorry, thanks.
Next up is Rob. And after Rob, I have Jorge Guerrero.
Thank you. I'm here today to express my strong opposition to House Bill 1380. It's cosponsored by our representatives Natasha Hill and Tim Ormsby. In summary, this bill introduces a vague and indefensible standard that enables homeless individuals to challenge regulations on public space use, effectively permitting camping and sheltering on sidewalks, parks, and other public spaces throughout our city. Last November, 75% of Spokane voters overwhelmingly approved Prop 1 prohibiting camping near schools and parks. This clear mandate reflects our community's commitment to public safety. As a father of two young children, my family and my community was relieved to see this passed with such strong support. This bill directly undermines this decision by allowing encampments in the very areas we collectively agreed should be protected for the safety and well-being of our children and families. The city of Spokane mission statement is to deliver efficient and effective services that facilitate economic opportunity and enhance quality of life. Supporting this legislation directly contradicts the mission you've pledged to uphold. This bill does nothing to facilitate economic opportunity or enhance quality of life for 99% of Spokane residents and creates a less safe, less desirable, less successful, and less prosperous city. I urge this council to stand firmly against this bill, send a clear message to our state representatives that Spokane deserves policies that respect local governments and the will of its citizens. We spoke loudly and clearly in November, and the sponsorship of this legislation is a slap in the face to Spokane voters who elected Hill and Ormsby. You have a responsibility to represent the interests of Spokane, not to undermine the democratic process by supporting bills that directly contradict our community's expressed wishes. And you cannot allow vague laws to dictate our city's future, the safety of our children and families, and the success of our local businesses and our communities. Thank you.
Jorge?
Good evening. My name is Jorge. Thank you so much for having me. Today, I wanted to discuss a resolution that we hope to introduce to the council, one that I think and the community, many of our community members think that is deeply needed. Today, I saw something very disturbing. I saw a video of a man who identified himself as a vigilante in front of the city of council in Sunnyside, where he was telling the council that we were now in the first phase of the deportation agenda, that once they enter, we enter the second phase, that that's when the vigilantes was going to come in and start collecting, or he painted a picture that they will be collecting $1,500 to basically get immigrants deported and separate families. And he was like, I'd love to get in that game because I'll do that for free, he said, enjoying what he was saying. He finished by asking the council, how were they planning on stopping him? That video really freaked me out because that's kind of like the scenario that I see our community really in deep fear. So today, I want to, I want to call on your leadership to introduce this resolution that will affirm the city's stance, and like we were talking about earlier, that we all belong. I want the city to stand with the immigrant community and to say it in public. And this resolution will also reinforce the Keep Washington Working Act, and that would mandate or highlight, or mandate, yeah, training for city personnel and for anyone, court personnel, corrections officer, to know about the law and making sure that they don't
And thank you, your time is up.
Be collaborating. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Teresa Knudsen is next. And after Teresa is Wendy Fishburne.
Thank you. My name is Teresa Knudsen, and I'm in the West Central neighborhood. And so what I have to say is Spokane is out of time. We must act now to save our city before lawbreakers do more harm. We live in a dysfunctional town that tolerates drug overdoses, amputations, and violence. There's no more time to wait and see. The children of Spokane see an ugly town of drugs and death. Many solutions are ready to go. Most important, follow the rule of law and hire enough police officers. With people existing on sidewalks, Spokane is violating the American with Disability Act and is violating our rule of ancient commons that we can walk around unimpeded and unthreatened without stepping on people. When I moved here in 1977, Spokane was beautiful. It was a wonderful place for kids. Now, kids see an ugly city. They see a violent city. Inaction, waiting, is harming kids' bright future and spoiling Spokane. Spokane is out of time. We need action now. Our new president has shown action in following the law and deporting violent illegal criminals who should have been in jail a lot or deported a long time ago. And many Americans support that. And again, I want to stress violent illegal immigrants. The time is now for Spokane to take action to restore law, order, safety, freedom, and beauty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wendy, and after Wendy, we'll have Jennifer.
Good evening again, city council, president, and members. Thank you for being here. I'm here to ask you to leverage your influence on the Natasha Hill and Tim Ormsby bill that's attempting to reverse the will of the people about sit and lie. This bill of theirs is a genuinely stunning betrayal of what the majority of Spokane has been communicating, both through voting and through participation in the roundtables that y'all hosted. We want sit and lie enforced. We want to discourage people from living on the ground. I desperately want our progressive-minded leaders to acknowledge what their mentors are doing. Gavin Newsom is closing camps. San Francisco has shut down the Tenderloin. Portland is recriminalizing drug use. Seattle City Council has also pivoted. Spokane is charmingly retro in so many ways. But this is not one area where we should be behind the curve. So please, you continue to guard the will of the people, protect our parks, our schools, and our addicted friends who need to be discouraged from this tragic lifestyle. The progressive left coast has seen the community and human carnage of lawlessness. So please guard our city by pushing back on the levers of power and influence that you each have at your disposal and communicate up the chain. And to your people, we're pivoting back to public health and safety. I would also be remiss if I didn't mention that today is International Holocaust Remembrance Day. So please be mindful of all of our members in the community. So thank you for all you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Jennifer? And after Jennifer, we will have Dennis Flynn, and then Hara Estrada.
Good afternoon, city council. My name is Jennifer Mesa. I live in the Logan neighborhood, and I'm also the executive director for Latinos in Spokane. We brought this resolution forward to you all because we are seeing an increase of targeted arrests within our immigrant communities. We've seen more arrests in the past two weeks than what we have had in the past six months. Folks that are residents of Washington State, that are residents here in Spokane, are being swept up and taken to different detention centers. Sometimes they go to the Tacoma Detention Center, and other times residents of Washington State are being picked up and taken to Idaho. In response, we have collected over 350 signatures, and 50 organizations have signed, and business owners have signed on to support this resolution to, one, reaffirm the commitment of Keep Washington Working and include law enforcement, jail, city staff for inquiry about releasing or collaborating with ICE and Border Patrol. We need that training for city staff because a lot of people do not know how to ensure compliance. And we also want to advocate for legal and immigration defense services for the city of Spokane. I want to mention that out of all of the arrests that we have been tracking, none of them are violent criminals, none of them have backgrounds for criminals or any of what, you know, has been shared in the media. These are essential workers here who are providing services to every single one of us. Everything that you have touched and eaten today has been touched and produced by an immigrant. We need to continue providing safety for our community because otherwise, we're all going to face it as a community. We also need to ensure that we are complying with this law so that we can enforce the fact that we're not going to allow militarization within Spokane. We're not going to allow that. It's not going to be who we are. We want to create a welcoming environment. We also need to train people and our staff to know that if Border Patrol or ICE come to our business, to our city, we are not going to allow them to just come in. They have to be able to comply themselves with the law.
Thank you, Jennifer. Dennis, and then Hara after that. And after Hara, we'll have Phil Altmaier.
Hey, council. Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. I emailed all you about this. On October 14th, Lisa Brown spoke at this meeting and reported the mayor's office has a goal, as heard at the 6-minute 54-second mark, to recruit people from different and divergent backgrounds and perspectives. I applied for the Climate Resilience and Sustainability Board and received confirmation, received my application on September 28th. On November 25th, I received an email from the city asking for continued patience, as there were many applicants who were being reviewed. Asked for an update on January 8th, but no response. I asked for another update on January 17th and got an email on January 18th saying all the positions were filled. So then I go and look at the board's webpage on the city website, and I see the two spots held for students are still open, but 12 of the 13 spots were filled. held for students are still open, but 12 of the 13 spots were filled on October 14th and October 21st, and the 13th spot was filled on December 16th. So I'm not sure if the misrepresentation of the board being not filled was ignorance, incompetence, or benign reason. For now, I'll choose to believe it was benign reason. My main concern is the misrepresentation by the mayor that she wants different and divergent backgrounds and perspectives. All anyone has to do is search the names of everyone on that board to quickly find out they are the director of the GU Climate Institute, the Lands Council, the Lake Roosevelt Forum, the director at Spokane Zero Waste, and an environmental justice program manager. You know what my take on this board is? It's a conflict of interest echo chamber with no divergent perspectives, and it's a shame and reflects poorly on our mayor.
Thank you. Hara?
Hara, you're online. I am going to unmute you right now, and you can go whenever you're ready.
Me, members of the Spokane City Council, my name is Hara Estrada, and I serve as the EVP of Strategy and Community of Us Are Better Held Together. I'm here today to testify in strong support of the city's Spokane resolution to uphold the Keep Washington Working Act and to advocate for the protection of immigrant rights in our community as brought forward by Latinos in Spokane. As Jennifer just shared, we have local businesses and Spokane residents who stand with us, really reflecting our shared commitment to making Spokane a welcoming, safe, and just city for all, including our immigrant neighbors. We have recently witnessed immigration custom enforcement and Border Patrol conducting sweep arrests across Washington. According to Vanis Hemathison, attorney at law, who has practiced immigration law for over eight years, these raids are reportedly targeting not only undocumented individuals, but also naturalized citizens. This should serve as a wake-up call. We cannot make assumptions about the legal status of those being targeted because ICE is flouting the law. When we fail to defend the most vulnerable in our communities, we create a dangerous precedent, paving the way for anyone deemed offensive to be targeted in any way possible. As a city, we have a duty to uphold the rule of law to protect the most vulnerable communities and to ensure it safeguards everyone tomorrow. And Spokane can lead with integrity and reject harmful actions by supporting the Keep Washington Working Act. On a personal level, I have witnessed the fear and the trauma that this policy create. No family should have to live in constant fear of being torn apart, and no city should stand idly by while vulnerable communities are subjected to unjust unlawful treatment. Spokane has a choice. We can live with courage and compassion, or we can allow fear and division to take root. And I urge you to adopt this resolution, educate city staff and law enforcement, and ensure that Spokane stands firmly on the side of justice. Thank you for your time and leadership. I trust you will do what is right.
Thank you. Next is Phil Altmaier, and then Barbara Woodbridge.
Good evening, President Wilkinson. Congratulations on five big years. So tonight, you guys spent a lot of time passing these ordinances on windows, houses, and everything else that we could do in our city. I find it interesting that I just learned last week that the city now is allowing shelters to go into any neighborhood without talking to the neighborhood, doing anything, checking on zoning. I'll have you know that we, well, I'm kind of excited about it in some ways, but we just spent $110,000 to put sprinkler systems into a shelter that we're building in the dining room, the sleeping area. We have to put in commercial kitchens. We have to have handicap bathrooms, showers. We spend $20,000 every year keeping up with those codes to be inspected. So now, I guess what I'm learning is because we're not operated and owned by the city, we now do not have to abide by those guidelines. That's what I just learned last week. So I assume that will save us $20,000 a year now in all the permits and things we have to up being standard with. I remember when we wanted to expand in a neighborhood, and that was a high-barrier shelter, we had to go before a hearing. It took us over six months to get approval from the neighbors. Now, it sounds like it's all changed. But again, I'm just wanting clarification from leadership. I assume those permits do not apply to us anymore. We don't have to do what was required of us to even build a shelter. That's my understanding. So I look forward to follow up on this so we can get clarifications. $20,000 a year to keep up with permits other people don't have to keep up with would be a blessing. Thank you.
Barbara?
My name is Barbara Woodbridge, and I am the president for the East Spokane Business Association. And I just want to tell you, it's a privilege to be able to come up here and speak to each one of you. As you see each one of these people that are in the audience, it takes a lot of courage. They have a lot of passion. We have a lot of passion. And I take a look at Spokane and some of the things that are getting presented and passed here in our community, and it's kind of scary when we take a look at some of the new House bills that are getting proposed, the House Bill 1380. For our society, it's already what we consider a little crazy. We have a lot going on, and it was kind of an example tonight where we, you know, have a lot of chaos here and there, whether it's in our community. But when I think about this new House Bill 1380, what scares me is that it's opening the doors to an unlimited amount of chaos. Anybody can sue for any reason now. It really does make it to where if somebody's offended or there's challenges in here, it can open up doors, and there's no stopping. Once we open up these doors without having regulations and having those parameters, it's a little bit concerning. It's so important for our society to make sure that we have those guidelines so that we know that each person here in our community is protected, and we know that for the business community, that for the hard dollars that we have going into our community, that we're represented as well. And it's not just those who are causing some destruction and knowing that they have more rights than we do. So please, as you look at this, do consider everybody, but also, once you open that door, we can't close it. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Next is Edgar Franks, and after Edgar is Evie Polinski.
Good evening, Madam President, everybody on the council. My name is Edgar Franks. I also live in the Logan District. I'm the political director for Independent Farmer Union, Familias Unidas por la Justicia, with over 500 members. We're here in support of the resolution to uphold Keep Washington Working Act. It's an important law that educates city staff and law enforcement. It could help avoid lawsuits, and also, it is crucial for keeping the public safe. I also served on Governor Bob Ferguson's transition team on the Project 2025 Subcommittee. Keep Washington Working Act was referenced many, many times as a model of how to keep Washington, our community, safe, and also as a way to model to other states of how we in Washington can protect essential workers. Immigrant workers who put their lives on the line during COVID, all the wildfires, and we still face exclusionary labor laws, have to endure dehumanizing words. Despite all these hardships, we continue to show up, to go to work. We still take our kids to school. We still go to our churches to pray. We clean your houses, take care of your kids, your elderly, harvest your food, build your homes, and we've been here. We joined the almost 400 individuals, community members, businesses, and community organizations to hopefully call the, to call the city council to support and uphold the Keep Washington Working Act. So thank you.
Thank you. Evie?
Evie, if you're online, can you hit star three or raise your hand?
If not, we'll go to Krista Featherstone, and then after Krista, Santos Hernandez.
I've been here before. I'm a small business owner. I'm on the board of the ESBA. I'm a mother of four. I'm a second chance employer. I have employed many felons, and I have an amazing adopted son who came into our lives when he was nine years old after his mother succumbed to drug addiction. I share all this not to make you think I'm something special or I'm a do-gooder, but it's my heart. And I also see your intentions and your compassions, and I do believe that we all belong here in Spokane. Every person who's come up here to share their story, it's all important and it's all valid, and we do all belong. In the fall, you asked us to bring solutions to the homeless addiction problem, and I believe that we did. Many of us went to the meetings. We spoke. We were involved. We showed up. And yet, we're still here, and one person a day roughly is dying. I believe we shared fund our police. We shared promote a culture of enforcement within our police department. Our police are out there. They are working. They are showing up. They are amazing, but they have one hand tied behind their backs. We need to plan for involuntary detox. Look at Houston. They really solved the problem. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. There are proven solutions that work. We don't have to wander around in the dark. You are our leaders, and leadership is hard. It is hard. It is uncomfortable. I just, I beg you to continue to seek the right thing. We've mismanaged our money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Santos, and after Santos, will be Jim McDevitt.
I come to you, I'm a newly arrival resident of Spokane, Washington. I moved here from Beaumont, Texas, and thank you for having me tonight. I'm here in support of Latinos in Spokane to urge the city council to pass the resolution on Keep Washington Working. I'm not going to pull at your heartstrings. I'm not going to tell you that they shouldn't be deported or anything like that. What I'm telling you is that we passed, the state passed a law to keep Washington working because they recognize the power and the need for these workers. And all we're saying is to come out in support of it because we need the labor, because the birth rates are falling, the death rates are rising, the largest generation of labor is retiring or is in the process of retiring. We don't have the workforce to replace them even now, and then we're talking about doing more damage to our economy and the wasteful spending to do things that are already in the law. I'm a Department of Justice accredited representative, and I've been legally representing people in some way or form for the past 17 years. 15 and a half, 16 years in Beaumont, Texas for Catholic Charities of Southeast Texas. Now, I've joined the team here in Spokane with Latinos in Spokane. We're doing it under the law because people have a right to be here and immigrate under the law, and they have a right to work under Keep Washington Working. We're just asking you to come out in support of a state law. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jim McDevitt, and then after Jim, Hadley Morrow.
Council President, members of the council, thank you for your service. I'm Jim McDevitt. I'm your former United States Attorney and your former Director of Law Enforcement, having spent a little time working for the city. I'm here asking you to publicly oppose House Bill 1380, as has been said by a couple of the previous speakers. I want you to, I would like you to join the Association of Washington Cities, Association of Washington Counties, as well as a multitude of West Side and East Side cities in opposition. House Bill 1380 flies in the face of Prop 1, which was passed by a 75% margin in Spokane voters. I've lived in Spokane for over 50 years. Nothing has ever passed by such a wide margin. It condemns homeless to life on the streets without mental health, with mental health and substance abuse issues. Look at the overdose numbers. Ours are going up while the nation's going down. It exposes the city to litigation. My experience as your Director of Law Enforcement is that a significant number of people homeless would prefer not to live housed, but would live on the street. We need tools to force people into rehab. I would ask you to go, to boldly go forward and look at California's conservatorship laws, which forces involuntary treatment. I know there's an opposition to criminalizing homeless, although it's the activity, the violation of the sit and law and violation of the law that is criminalized, not homeless in itself, but this is a civil remedy, and it's halfway between criminalization and no action at all. So I would ask you to, as a city, to go forward and urge your legislators to look at something like the California conservatorship laws, which force involuntary drug treatment and mental health treatment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Next is Hadley Morrow, and then Robert Richard, then Tyler Tumush.
Hi there, Council. My name is Hadley Morrow. I'm a Lincoln Heights resident. I came here to echo the beautiful support for the Keep Washington Working Act and just affirm my hope that this body makes sure that they're holding to the highest level of opportunity to role model this, you know, what the state has already affirmed, and also make sure that we're really training our public services around the importance of the boundaries here, especially to make sure that people feel that they can access their public services, like police and fire, without fear. However, my comments have changed slightly because I just witnessed an arrest in the gallery, and it feels important that we're talking about public safety for all, that I want to comment on the fact that I really don't feel like that had to happen that way. And that it feels really, I really understand the important need to uphold decorum in these meetings, but it feels wholly unacceptable that tonight, a man came down here, who I happened to know, learned at the Homeless Connect, that this was a place where he could talk about his concerns and his feelings about the city. And also, this was a space where, thanks to the MAC movement, he could get a hot drink and some food and a snack and some people to talk to. And the end goal, the end of this was he got arrested. Like, he came down here to talk to you all, and somehow, some things went so wrong that he was arrested for trespassing, and that feels like there was a lot of things that went wrong in the middle. I have so many thoughts, which I am definitely going to write in a big old email to you all, because you know that I can write big emails to city council, but it just feels so important that this is a place for really critical investigation to take place for what just happened and why that happened, and how we're actually figuring out how to make this body a place that is actually safe for all, no matter your mental status, no matter your housing status, to be able to come and share their voice, and how are we making sure that city employees and public employees wholly are being trained in tactics related to de-escalation? It is my understanding that the security guard did call and ask for the mental health unit. The mental health unit did not come, and officers said out there the mental health unit would not be coming, would not be responding. I really hope to hear that there's some investigation related to this. And also, thanks for Latinos in Spokane for the incredible work that they're doing. I'm all about the place tonight. A little frazzled. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Hadley. Robert, and then Tyler. And after Tyler, our last speaker will be Greg Garan Andrews.
Good evening, Council President. My name's Robert Richard. It's kind of an Anglo-sized French name from Quebec in the 17th century. I retired as a petty officer from the U.S. Navy, Woodbee Island, in 1992. In recent years, I've gleaned that one out of seven people in Washington are migrant workers or, you know, immigrants. And I had a Washington CDL, and I picked up fruit from farms in Yakima, Wenatchee, and you name it, wine, farms, and orchards. And I saw things that impressed me that I didn't, I've never seen in Idaho or California and Michigan, which are all agricultural states too. My grandpa even picked cherries in Michigan as a youth, and I know something about it living in Oxnard, California there. That was a, I had ICE inspect my room there once, looking for Patty Hearst back in '74. I would, I would be scared if I was a Latino today, you know, if I heard ICE was coming. They scared the heck out of me. I can remember seeing a lot of stuff in California there way back I can remember seeing a lot of stuff in California there way back in those days and listening to racist jokes on public talk radio from L.A. up in Oxnard there. It was all American city, you know, Oxnard, and it's mostly Latino. It was a great town. But anyway, Washington really impressed me before I got off the road, and this KWW came to the law. So I think you're improving better than any of these other states, and I, and I'm all for keeping this going in the latest revision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tyler, and then Garin.
Tyler Tumush, District 1. Good evening, council. Congrats, Betsy, on five years. That's awesome. Before I start, I just want to say make sure that you get all the facts about what happened back there before you all make your kind of final judgment on what happened. So you're probably going to get a lot of emails from that, so just make sure you get all the facts on that. What I want to say today is, my word for the day is accountability. It's an important action in all aspects of life, beginning with childhood all the way to the end of our lives. If a child hits someone, you hold them accountable to make sure that it doesn't become a habit. If an adult commits a heinous crime, you hold them accountable for their actions. If a company or organization abuses power or misuses money, accountability is demanded. If people feel our government wrongs them in any way, their constituents demand accountability. If we don't give attention to our proper account, to proper accountability, we will fail as humans. Society will fail. I've seen effective accountability on many occasions, and it works. And as I get closer and closer to becoming a father for the first time, this word has even more purpose and meaning to me. In my opinion, the most important thing about accountability is you should not be afraid of it. You cannot be afraid of it. Make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Wilkerson, council, thanks for this opportunity. I just wanted to talk briefly about the homelessness crisis we have in Spokane. I'm sure you've heard about it ad nauseam every council meeting you have. One thing I didn't hear addressed tonight was the issue with the federal law and housing first and what a hamstring it is for cities like Spokane. I just encourage you to continue to work with our federal legislators and get it changed. I'm a retired firefighter, city of Spokane, for 27 years, paramedic. I've been in all of the Catholic Charities building, and my hats off to them, they do a great job of building buildings. Unfortunately, their only criteria for success is how fast they get a key into someone's hand. There's no expectation for that person to ever leave, ever, or to have meaningful treatment if they are an addict or have debilitating mental illness. Those services are offered, but unfortunately, for people that don't have the capacity to make a decision for themselves, they're by and large ignored or refused. They don't have the ability or the means to enforce their own rules that drugs and alcohol aren't allowed in those rooms. So therefore, they just have a nicer place to continue to destroy their lives. It's not compassionate, and it's just not right. So I respectfully request that you reconsider the work of Gavin and his crew that put together the Spokane Cooperative. I think it was a really great idea. Tons of work went into it, and I think it has merit. Needs to be readdressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Because we did not have Evie that opened up a spot for Eugene Knowles, if you'd like to speak, Eugene?
I guess most of the council members know that my concern is with homelessness, but I thought I'd, well, let me, let me just make it short. I was happy that I didn't get called because I felt like I was a little bit out of step. And then I heard everything that everyone was saying, and I was convinced that I was out of step for what I was going to say. And then now, the council president calls me up here, says, I guess I got to get in step momentarily. Here's what I'll say because of what I heard. I'm impressed to see so many of the Latinos in Spokane here today because we all know that something's coming down. So I'll just leave it at that because I got to think about what I heard and get in step. The homeless thing, this is how I'll conclude it. The homeless thing has, the process of solving it here in Spokane hasn't gone well.
Thank you, Eugene. And with my poor eyesight, our actual last speaker is Chris Shuler. Chris?
I'm in District Bingle in Cathcart. Betsy Wilkerson, I'm speaking to the president, which is you. I hope you listen. When you first became the city council member, I got a lot of hope. I was so happy to see you elected for the position here five years ago. And, you know, I've been abused my entire life. I've spoken to this city how I was a slave, extremely abused, with my sisters and cousins, Rob McCann, Catholic Charities family. Okay? I have a child with Rob McCann's father is one of my kids that was stolen. I've been just so abused by them, and so I was so glad when you came in. I saw you're a female. You talked so much about knowing what it's like to be oppressed, and so I got a lot of hope, you know, because the police officers are corrupt, the patriarchal mafia power player dudes, corruption, corruption, corruption. Okay? So I was super happy to see you here, and I even hugged with you when that is just, you know, is something I don't do because of all the abuse. And so I contacted you, and I got really brave to contact you to ask for help about being abused in my apartment by master key rapists. And what you did was, is you called them and told them that I complained about it. Remember? You contacted the abusers and tattletaled on me for complaining, and they came straight after me and assaulted me even more and did permanent damage to me and some others. They kill people. They're very dangerous. And I just, you know, that's beyond mean for you to do that. It's the worst thing anybody could do when somebody steps up, you know, to speak up. I'm being abused. Anybody who says that, I'm being abused. And you call the abusers or you contacted them and complained and told them that I was complaining. It was beyond mean. It was actually evil, and I'm still having to recover from what you did. And I hope that everybody in this city knows that if they're being abused and they need help and they can't get help from a police officer, Betsy Wilkerson is not the person to tell. You know that I'm not lying.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Again, please join us at the lunar celebration on Saturday, and we will see you next Monday night.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.